Buenas tardes, a todos. Bienvenidos a la edición del Barto de la Alpaso ISD, reunión de los presidentes. Comenzaremos en unos momentos, pero antes quiero que sepan que si alguien requiere servicios de traducción, por favor, visiten nuestra sala de tecnología en la parte trasera de la sala de juzgados y nosotros os asistiremos. Bienvenidos a todos. Si alguno de ustedes necesite servicios de traducción por esta junta, por favor nos visite en nuestro salón de tecnología y le podemos asistir. Gracias.
Buenas tardes. Vamos a llamar a esta reunión a orden. Son las 5:06 y vamos a comenzar con el artículo 2, que es el juramento de lealtad. Si pueden, por favor, estar con nosotros. Y si pueden, por favor, unirnos en un momento de silencio. Gracias. Esto nos llevará al artículo 4, reconocimientos. Miss Rodriguez.
Buenas tardes, presidente de la Junta, Superintendente Sayavedra y el Consejo de los Presidentes. Es mi placer compartir con ustedes un vistazo a los maravillosos logros que están ocurriendo en el distrito de El Paso.
Así que es mi placer compartir con ustedes un vistazo a los maravillosos logros que están ocurriendo en el distrito de El Paso. Por primera vez en la historia de la Alpaso ISD, cuatro ensambles de mariachi han ganado la oportunidad de competir en la competencia estatal en la competencia estatal UIL en Seguin, Texas. Austin High School Mariachi Pantera. Chapin High School Mariachi El Capitan. Coronado High School Mariachi Oro. Y Franklin High School Mariachi Estrella del Oeste. En febrero, Austin, Chapin y Coronado recibieron una excelente calificación. Cuando Franklin aseguró la primera calificación estatal superior del distrito, mostrando la calidad excepcional de su programa. Este año cumple con la décima edición del concurso de mariachi estatal y el quinto año como competición estatal oficial. Los ensambles de mariachi de Austin, Chapin, Coronado y Franklin nos han hecho muy orgullosos. Ahora celebremos. Ahora celebramos con la aplauso resuelto por sus excelentes logros. A este tiempo, vamos a dejar a nuestros mariachis a las costas mientras pedimos al Consejo que se unan a nosotros frente al dios mientras celebramos nuestros mariachis estatales de El Paso ISD. Ok, vamos a llamar a Franklin High School primero para hacer una foto. Así que Franklin High School, felicitaciones. Recuperó la primera calificación estatal superior del distrito. Este fue su tercer momento de calificación para la competencia estatal. Felicidades a Chapin High School Mariachi El Capitan. Este fue su cuarto momento de calificación y representando a la Alpaso ISD en la competición de mariachi estatal. Y felicidades a Austin High School Mariachi Pantera. Este fue el primer momento de representación de Austin High School de la Alpaso ISD en la competición estatal de mariachi.
Our next group to recognize is the exceptional El Paso High School Girls Basketball Team. As we find ourselves in the midst of March Madness, a time when the nation's attention is captured by the NCAA men's and women's basketball tournaments, we also have our own basketball star shining El Paso ISD. The El Paso High School Girls Basketball Team has had a remarkable season, achieving a significant milestone by securing the Bi-District Crown for the first time in the school's history. Please join me in congratulating the Lady Tigers on their outstanding achievement. Congratulations. Our next recognition goes to a group of students who excel on the wrestling mats. These dedicated wrestlers put in endless hours perfecting their takedown moves and strategies to outmaneuver their opponents. A cohort of El Paso ISD students recently competed at the State Wrestling Championship and proudly returned with well-deserved medals in their respective weight divisions. Please join me in congratulating Giovanna Valades Hernandez from Andrus High School, who secured a second-place medal. Congratulations, thank you. Next is Ian Abdallah from Franklin High School, who also earned a top medal. Congratulations. Let's give these talented athletes a round of applause to celebrate their impressive achievements. Next, we would like to commend Officer Rafael Alarcon for his heroic actions in saving the life of a wounded victim during his patrol of an El Paso ISD neighborhood. On February 3rd, 2024, while on duty, Officer Alarcon encountered a gunshot victim. Without hesitation, he swiftly administered lifesaving first aid, including applying two tourniquets to the victim. Officer Alarcon composed demeanor and ability to keep the victim calm were instrumental in the situation. He remained by the victim's side until they were safely transported to the hospital. Officer Alarcon's exemplary conduct exemplifies the values of El Paso ISD and showcases his dedication to serving and protecting the community. Please join me in extending our heartfelt congratulations to Officer Alarcon for his outstanding service and commitment. The last group the board will recognize is SAS, the School Attendance Zone Committee, for their service and dedication. The insights provided by the committee have been instrumental in guiding the administration in developing the proposed 24-25 boundary recommendations, with a focus on ensuring continuity with neighborhood feeder patterns. The committee is currently in the first year of a two-year term. Please help me in thanking the committee, Georgina Williams. Jocelyn Roberts. Dan Hyman. Andrew Veyu. Michael Lopez. Kendell Jessup. And Joe Piñón. Thank you all for your service on this important committee. Thank you again, and this concludes this month's recognitions.
Thank you to our students and staff and everyone else that joined us today. This will take us to item number five. If you can please direct your attention to the TV screens for a quick message before public forum.
The district is a local government body charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in our district, and board meetings must be focused on meeting this charge. In meeting that charge, the district board meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act to conduct the business of the district. They are not, however, meetings of the public. Therefore, all persons in attendance are expected to display civility and decorum that is respect for other persons without the use of insulting, profane, threatening, or abusive language. Public comment will not be used for personal attacks. In addition, you are directed to the district's complaint procedures and board policy regarding employee, student, parent, or public complaints. The deputy superintendent of administration is in attendance if you wish to discuss a matter with him. Please note that during public forum, specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries. However, the board may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not posted on its agenda.
The first speaker I have is Jennifer DeGraff. Thank you ma'am, you have three minutes.
I always say, can I at least go first or let me go last? That's the way I feel comfortable. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for allowing the public forum. I feel like in my history in El Paso ISD, I came to commend the board and the members of the community that sit here with us today. I'd like to go ahead and get started first with my name, Jennifer DeGraff. With 46 years in El Paso ISD, I know that's a large number, I don't look that old. But I walked through Andrus High School to get to Newman Elementary from five years old and on. And when it comes to that, Mr. Irobali, thank you for serving our Andrus feeder pattern. When it comes to my history with El Paso ISD, let's go forward. I was the first year teaching at Guién Middle School, the Bowie feeder pattern, and there necesito hablar en inglés y español. And for that reason, El Paso ISD raised me on equity, inclusion, and making sure that we're able to meet the needs of all our learners. When it comes to the Ms. Hernandez, when I think of District Four, when I look around the room, there are people that probably already know me, and that's okay, they have my cellphone number, which is great because my service to El Paso ISD continues. As the assistant principal at Irvin High School, remember, discipline is one thing, but we want to build the hopes and dreams, Ms. Ayvedra. I have read it, I feel it, I've been able to live it, and so I want to thank you. It starts with us. When I think back to Canyon Hills Middle School, I was principal there, some of you know Mr. Vent Shupfield. I know, I know, when there were times I just needed to vent, he listened, and I acknowledge him for that, and I thank you. It starts with us. When I think back to when I was the principal, I had a mentor, he may not admit it, but he still is. Mr. Baz, without you, I wouldn't have been able to make it. You were my survival stone, and for that, I thank you. When it comes to Alex, I know, I shouldn't call you by first name, but that's my son's name because now I continue to be a parent in El Paso ISD with the Burgess feeder pattern. When I think back to all the great things that I could have done and should have done, now I get to hear it from Ms. Rituale. Ms. Rituale is the principal at Burgess, and he keeps me in line with what I need to do. And for that, I thank you. I think back, I don't want to say last but not least, but the one that has really resonated with me is in my 46 years, things have changed dramatically. Those hopes and dreams are what we were hoping for and needing here in our community, and I want to commend you. It starts with us. When I think about the strategic blueprint, let's go ahead and move forward. What I ask of you is to help us reconnect. When I think back to the times that I shared in El Paso ISD, I miss it. There are many factors that we might not always talk about, but let's be real, let's be transparent. When I think back to it, the student leaders, that is what we really need to refocus on. The voices of our students is what really made us become who we are today. And for that, I thank you. I noticed there's already a student leadership committee that also has the opportunity to voice their perspectives.
Your three minutes are up, thank you so much.
And born and raised Fort Bliss, so I know times managing. And with that, thank you so much for listening to us here today, and don't forget your Y. It starts with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Honhold. Sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Well, good evening, trustees and district leaders. I rise to make a humble request that should not cost much more than the time it takes to make it happen, and will make me and probably other teachers very happy. As we know, recording assignments and final grades is a crucial part of a teacher's responsibility. And as the district has added valuable programs and course options for students, the number of gradebooks that must be juggled has widely expanded. Just using me as an example, I teach four different courses, three of them dual credit, each with their own learning platform. So my Texas Government course uses Sage Vantage, my American Government course uses Connect by McGraw-Hill, my Econ 2301 course uses Sendgauge's MindTap, and for my regular speech course, I use Schoology. I collect most of my grades for dual credit in Blackboard, so that's six gradebooks. Luckily for me, Sage and Connect update automatically in Blackboard via an API. However, I still need to manually type grades into Teams for parent and district needs, and that's just me. Obviously, an API integration with Teams and all the various publishers the district uses would be a challenging undertake, and I'm not asking for that. All I want is something Blackboard and most other learning management systems have, an ability to download a CSV copy of my gradebook and then upload a new one with updated grades. Allow me to quickly explain. Say I need to fill my Blackboard gradebook with grades from Teams. I would simply create one assignment in Blackboard and then download the gradebook complete with that one assignment and all the student names, and this serves as a template. I then copy and paste all the assignment headings and grades into the CSV and upload back into Blackboard. It then creates all the required columns and fills them with grades from the CSV. It's all very easy and simple, much faster than typing them in manually. So all I want is a simple way to shave hours off a tedious and menial task that can be accomplished with some, hopefully, quick changes to Teams. Simply adding a button to download and upload the gradebook in a CSV format would save me hours each month. I bet there are a great many teachers in this district that would love, love this simple change. And if you cannot give us a meaningful raise that actually keeps pace with inflation that is causing so much pain, at least pay us in the form of saved time that can be better spent working with students or, you know, sharing with family. If you can fulfill this simple request, I'm sure I and many other teachers will be, you know, very happy, very happy. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Norma Delarosa? You have three minutes, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Irobali, members of the board, Ms. Ayvedra. I am Norma Delarosa, president of El Paso Teachers Association. Retaliation is not a very pretty word, and it is most definitely a word that no one in authority wants to hear. Unfortunately, retaliation is becoming a very common practice within this district. As the elected leader of my teacher union, I am charged with the responsibility of ensuring that laws and policies as it affect the working conditions of my members are adhered to. I am not new to this position. I have seen firsthand employees discriminated against and retaliated for standing up for their rights as employees, for their and students, but more so because of the many injustices they have seen and witnessed over the years, either to themselves or to their colleagues. Retaliation is a blatant violation of federal and state law and your own district policy. This administration, particularly the chief human capital management officer and the executive director of employee relations, very adamantly sit there and tell me they do not tolerate retaliation of any kind. Yet, in light of recent events where they have misconstrued my fierce advocacy for my members, when administration is wrong, that retaliation is now directed at me. Policy DGBA is there as an avenue for employees to go through what should be a very expedient process to resolve their issues, and it may work if those employees are not represented by me. Ways are being found to conjure up, make up, and find loopholes to dismiss grievances filed on behalf of my members. If they are trying to break me and get me to back off on my advocacy for my members, they have picked the wrong person to have that fight with. By their retaliating against- By their retaliating against me, they are retaliating against my members who are employees of EPISD, and that is in violation of your own policy. I will continue to do my job and advocate for my members as hard as I can, but if that is the fight you want, if you as a board and Ms. Ayvedra continue condone this kind of behavior violating law and policy, then I will accept that challenge. That fight will not stop here with this board. The disrespect and unprofessional demeanor that I have encountered is, using their own language, a violation of the Texas Educator's Code of Professional Ethics. And finally, a reminder, I don't work for you any longer, but my members will not be at the other end of any retaliatory measures aimed at me. Thank you.
Mr. Ross Moore?
You have three minutes.
Board President Iribali, board members, Ms. Ayvedra, my name is Ross Moore, president of El Paso AFT. You've heard some of this when I asked you to honor the contract with the voters. I'm here to remind you of that contract, and once again, you broke your promise to the citizens of El Paso and the employees of EPISD. Whether you were in the district in 2016 or not is irrelevant. It is binding on EPISD. It is EPISD's word that was given, and thus your word being judged based on your actions and administration's actions. You've already broken the contract, the 2016 contract with the voter once, and with the Morehead sale, now bottom. That brings the total up to about eight million dollars that was supposed to go to employee compensation. I know that's only around one percent, but let me continue. The 2016 contract with the voters was the thing that, that promise enticed skeptical employees to support that bond and shifted the balance of employees that way. They believed and acted against their better instincts based on your written public promise. What you have told them today is that they were suckers to believe EPISD and then its leadership, and what you're telling them now is that district will say anything to get what it wants and not deliver and counts on remaining, them remaining gullible, docile suckers. I'd asked you to do the right and honorable thing. You chose not to. There is another embarrassment, another integrity and transparency embarrassment about your 2024 bond that's about to bubble to the surface of the EPISD pond tomorrow. You're aware of it, Ms. Ayvedra and Mr. Iribali. I just, just a reminder, the more you try to hide something, the more I dig. I learned that as an intelligence officer. And if you answer a question that I know the answer to with a lie, you lose all credibility past, present, and future. Again, I remind you of that credo. An officer's word is their bond, and in the case of the district, a district's word is its bond, and yes, that is still a double entendre. Thank you very much for your attention. I'm sorry to be the bearer of bad news. Happy Equinox Day, though.
Mr. President, just to clear something up, I just want to read Section Three of the compact with the voters. It says, "Within the limitations required by principles of sound fiscal management, the current Board of Trustees of the district believes that, one, it is a priority to make teacher and campus staff compensation and/or benefits more competitive with other area school districts in order to retain and recruit talented and experienced teachers and campus support staff; and, two, that the actual savings to the district derived from the consolidation and closure of schools should support additional funding for such increased compensation and benefits." That's the actual words of the compact.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. This will take us to item number six, consent agenda. I have two speakers on items for the consent, and it's item six, A2, approval February 2024 Board of Trustee Meeting. Ms. Delarosa? You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Iribali, members of the board, Ms. Ayvedra. I am Norma Delarosa, president of El Paso Teachers Association. Minutes of a meeting are intended to be an accurate record of what occurs at any meeting where a group of people are gathered to make important decisions that affect how their organization or club should operate. Minutes need to reflect accurately what is stated for one simple reason. Should there be a need to go back and determine what was said or not said, what passed or did not pass, the minutes are the official document that is referenced. I make it a priority to review the minutes of previous meetings to make sure that what I report to my members is accurate, that how trustees vote on issues of concern or priority to my members is recorded, and how the trustees voted on those issues. I normally will not comment on the minutes of any meeting, but when it comes to my attention that I was reported to have said this or that and come to find out that my words were either twisted to fit the narrative that is being played out, or comments are attributed to me that I did not say, it is my duty to make sure that the official records, such as the minutes of a meeting where I have made comments, is reflected accurately. The February minutes state under public forum that I addressed the board regarding employee safety. In reality, what was addressed was much more serious, assaults and the lack of consequences for students and parents who assault EPISD employees by administration. Finally, one other important detail was left out of the minutes, and I wonder why. Trustee Cuellar announced not once, but twice, that he intended to have a meeting with the superintendent, the superintendents from other districts, the county and city attorneys to discuss how to combat this worrying trend of increasing assaults. I ask that you amend the minutes to reflect, to accurately reflect what was, what I stated and that trustee Cuellar's remarks are added for the record. Thank you.
Mr. Ross Moore? You have three minutes, sir.
Board President Iribali, board members, Ms. Ayvedra, my name is Ross Moore, president of El Paso AFT. Last meeting on the 22nd of February, I spoke at public forum. This is what your draft official legal minutes say I said, addressed. Quote, "Mr. Ross Moore, president of the El Paso American Federation of Teachers, addressed the board, sharing his concerns with teacher hiring data." That is definitely not what I addressed when I spoke to you during public forum on the 20th. That is a deliberate false representation of the problem I spoke to. What I actually spoke to was that EPISD HR deliberately provided false or altered information in response to four open records requests over a period of four months. You know, once is an oopsie, as I said last time, twice a trend, three times a problem, four times deliberate. ORRs are an official document, as are these minutes. As I provided trustees this morning, the actual text of my remarks, and if you read them, that little descriptor and those actual remarks are night and day different from each other. The issue was not, as President presented in the minutes, it was, okay, do not compound their transgression by falsifying an official record. Please table this until this is resolved, preferably an accurate picture of what I spoke to, not a vandalized, misleading version. Thank you very much for your attention. I hope we can resolve this problem.
Thank you. Trustees, are there any items that will be, that would like to be pulled? I am pulling item six, G10, and six, H1 through six. Do I have a motion on approving the consent agenda excluding six, G10, and six, H1 through six?
I move to approve the consent agenda with the exclusions.
Do I have a second?
I second.
That's a motion by trustee Call, a second by trustee Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? That item passes unanimously, six, zero. This will take us to items six, G10, and six, H1. Ms. Collins, I just want to take them all as a bunch, a group. That's fine. You know the reason.
Yes, you may take them as a group. As long as it's clear that what the board is voting on.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so just so the trustees are aware, I recently accepted a new position with the El Paso Association of Contractors. During that time, I worked very diligently with Ms. Ayvedra and Ms. Collins to ensure that there was a level of transparency and protections put in place to ensure the integrity of our organization, EPACs, and myself. Anyone that knows me knows that's above all one of the most important things for me. Since I've served on this district, I've stepped away from various votes from the city of El Paso to communication contracts that had my former employer Barracuda Public Relations. I continue to do the exact same thing that I have always done, which is serve with honor, respect, and integrity. It's important to me. My community deserves it, and I think EPISD deserves it. I look at the work that each and every one of y'all do every day for our district, and I want to mimic and show that as well. So with that being said, under the advice from Ms. Collins and Ms. Ayvedra and in consultation with them, we've agreed that moving forward, it's better for me and our respective organizations to remove myself from those opportunities of contracts with construction companies that I may ever have as a member, work with as a member, or even be associated with. So just in an act of transparency and ensuring that we do the best thing for this district, putting our students first, our organization first, I'm happy to sit these out, knowing that we're doing the right thing once again. And I know, I think we said it heard ten times today, it starts with us, and we want to make sure that we uphold that integrity. So with that being said, I'll be recusing myself from these. In the future, trustees, you'll be seeing this item pulled out every single time, just so that I can recuse myself from it. So with that, I'll call for a motion. And the motion would be to approve item six, G10, and six, H1 through six, H6.
Before, before we take a motion, I just wanted to publicly congratulate President Iribali on his new, on his new position and, and thank him for his integrity through this process. A couple of weeks ago, when, when President Iribali told me about this, this new position that, that he'd been offered, I was, I was, I was happy for him, and he committed to me at that time that, you know, everything would be above board, transparent, and he stuck to his word through that, and I'm, I'm just wanted to publicly congratulate him on that.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve item six, G10, and six, H1 through eight, six, H6?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
That is a motion by trustee Hernandez, a second by trustee Call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I am abstaining from the vote, so that item passes five, zero, with one abstention being myself. This will take us to item number seven, which is a public meeting. Ms. Ayvedra, this is item A, March 2024 Public Meeting on Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief ESER III Program.
Yes. As we have done many times before, we will be providing the board and the community an update on where we are with the spending of our ESER funds. We're getting close to the closeout of ESER funding, and so today we have Mr. Vasquez and Ms. Maribel Macias, who will provide us with an update on all of the projects, closeouts, you know, and what is pending in terms of expending the funds through, what is it, September 2024, right?
And, and before you begin, I just want to say that this is a public meeting, so after the presentation is concluded, we'll invite members from the public, whether you signed up or not, if you'd like to provide public comment on this issue, but that will be after the completion of the presentation. So, Mr. Vasquez, and congratulations, sir, on, on your new opportunity with the district.
Thank you. Very excited. As trustee Iribali just prefaced, my name is Daniel Vasquez. I'm the district's Fund Development and Education Foundation Officer, and as Ms. Ayvedra mentioned in the introduction, this is our semi-annual update on the ESER III use of funds. I'm joined today by Norma Nguyen. She's the Assistant Director of Fund Development and really the brains behind the entire ESER operation, as well as Maribel Macias. She's the Chief of Organizational Transformation and Equity. So today what we'll do is we'll provide an update on the ESER III use of funds, review some of the project impacts since last we met in November, share with you a little bit of what you're going to notice on the ESER dashboard if you take a look at it now, and then go over our next steps with you. So in November, when we presented, we were at seventy-three percent utilized of our, of our funds through seventy percent of the performance period. And at that time, I told you as a district, we had really started to turn the corner because we were above the performance rate as it related to utilization. So prior to that, we had always been about three to five percent behind as far as utilization compared to performance period, and at that time, I told you that I wasn't anticipating any regression, that going forward, we should always be ahead. In fact, I projected that when I presented to you in March of 24, we would be at ninety percent utilized. So we fell a little bit short of that projection, but that's okay, and I'll share with you why we're a little short of that projection, but let you know that there's no real reason for panic or alarm on that. So today, we're at eighty-seven percent utilized of our ESER III project funding, and we are at eighty percent of our program period. As Ms. Ayvedra mentioned, the program expires on September 30th of 24, so to only have thirteen percent of our funds remaining with twenty percent of the program period left means that we're, we're in a really good position to execute our funding utilization with fidelity. When we started the ESER III planning, we had a couple of big rocks that you, as a Board of Trustees, asked us to make sure that we met. And when we started the implementation of the ESER III funding, we all recognized and agreed that the world was going to change during that performance period. And so as the world has changed, so has our approach to how we've utilized the funds, but all of our pivots have been strategically designed to make sure that we were aligned not only to the original intent of what the use of funds plan was, but also to align and accommodate with what the new strategic levers were that the superintendent, the Board of Trustees, and the leadership cabinet here at the district were putting into place. So what I've done with this slide is kind of pointed out some of the areas where we've had to pivot throughout the ESER III performance period to kind of remind everybody what those pivots were and how they've impacted the district and our students and our staff, and more importantly, to, to remind everybody that they are strategically aligned with what our original vision was. So since we last met, as it relates to high-quality instructional materials, we've made a major investment in curriculum. We were fortunate enough to have some cost savings with ESER, so we could make a large investment with our, with our instructional materials, which prevented us from having to either go into fund balance or make cuts in other spots with our local funds. And then we were also able in January, because of the board-approved action, made an investment in our fine arts programming, and we made a $600,000 investment in replacing fine arts instruments. Additionally, we've been able to modify or at least accommodate some of our approaches to collaborate the use of the ESER funding with other grant-funded initiatives as well as our locally funded initiatives, and I think the best place that we can see that is in how we've utilized the ESER funds for the after-school and extended-day programming, which is, which has been a large initiative and a priority of the district as well as the board. And then also to be the first district in this region to bring Kickstart Kids to its community, we were able to use the ESER funds to make sure that we had Kickstart Kids at two campuses, and with any projected cost savings going into the next year, we might be able to use that funding to extend into two more campuses and secure the funding for the year. So we continue to meet the needs of our students and stay completely aligned to what the district's strategic priorities and initiatives are. As it relates to employee retention, we've actually made some really great investments here in our, in our staff, and I think it's very important to point out here that we've done so in a financially prudent way because we don't find ourselves in a compromised position going forward. When ESER ends, we'll be in a good spot, and we're not going to have to look for supplemental funds to gap-fill any of the expenses that we took on throughout the course of the year. Additionally, we've used the ESER funding to make investments in professional development, particularly with the Holdsworth Institute. We've used this to provide some training for our leadership design. And additionally, at the last board meeting, the board approved us to send some of our staff to Spain to continue with the Visiting International Teachers Program, which will give us an advantage in the region to be able to identify and hire bilingual and dual-language teachers. It sounds weird, so I apologize. I hope it's just in my head. Lastly? I told you technology really doesn't like me. I know the machines are coming for me. And, and lastly, what we've done is we've, we've collaborated a lot of our efforts for school safety. So when ESER started, the term "school safety" meant something very, very different. We were talking about social distancing. We were talking about testing. We were talking about COVID mitigation, and since that time, safety has become something completely different. So ESER So ESER funding allows us to coordinate some of our, some of our funding sources to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the district. And so where we were able to pivot was in some of those areas where we were doing tested and the health pieces, those were no longer a concern or a priority, so we made strategic pivots to make investments in our school safety initiatives, and now we have a really robust fund from which to do that. So I point that out through this slide, so that way there's complete transparency and you have an understanding of any of the strategic pivots that we made, as well as the reasoning behind those pivots. When we met in November, we shared with you some of the highlights of what we had accomplished with the ESER funding. So, so this is this year's, this is this six-month period's impact. HVAC is our biggest project, so it's, it's always going to be up there. Again, we pointed out the Kickstart Kids program. The leadership talent development, so that's Holdsworth, that's some of our professional development. Again, we did the work with the Visiting International Teachers Program, the Fine Arts Accelerated Learning. We've been fortunate to see the fine arts students perform at the last several board meetings, so you see that work. That's actually in place, as well as our high-quality instructional materials. And I can't underscore the employee retention stipends enough. That's really provided us with a cost-effective opportunity to compensate our staff and our employees without compromising our financial integrity as we move forward.
Mr. Vazquez, if you don't mind me asking if I can interject right here. When you mentioned having to pivot to work on other methods or another way of going about working on a project, do we let the TEA know or those that are administering these SR funds with a justification why we're changing what we're changing, or do we just do it?
It, it depends on the change that we're making, the cost of that change, and then the financial category where the change comes from. So if we have a big construction project and we're going to take on more in capital cost, then we're required to get pre-approval from TEA. If we're making a change in one budget category for, if, if we're buying widgets and we had originally intended on buying pretzels, then, then we're okay, we don't need to notify that because it stays within the same intent. But if there's ever like a big, large-scale change that, that changes the direction, we have to notify TEA. But the reason why we've been as disciplined as we have with all of the pivots was we wanted to make sure that the pivots stayed within one of the original pillars or one of the original intents and focuses. So that way, we could not just justify it to TEA, but justify it to our stakeholders, right? Because as we said, the world changed, so the, the why hasn't changed, just some of our how's changed.
Right. But allowances that are there for you to be able to...
Absolutely. And, and, and the reality is, is ESER has a lot more flexibility than any other federal grant that we've had. We've, we've utilized that within the allowability, but we've been very diligent to document and categorize everything that we've changed. And so when I say Ms. Nguyen is the brains behind the operation, I say so because of all the documentation that she keeps.
Okay. Thank you.
I think also, just in response to your question, trustee Hernandez, there were some pivots that were initiated once we solidified our strategic blueprint and the priorities that we have as a district in terms of charting the future. We, we went back to make sure that any ESER money that was going to be expended was going to be in alignment with, with that direction. And, and, and so there were some pivots that were initiated by that as well.
That's correct. And, and that's why on, throughout the slide, we, we, we have the, the levers there. So that way, as we're discussing that, we can, we've, we've tried to connect what we started with ESER before these levers existed to show where we work towards, towards, towards our finish line. So currently, we have 48 projects in total. 14 of them are meeting, meeting goal. As you can see in your documentation, we provided a brief description of what we felt meeting goal meant. We don't foresee any problems or any issues. We think we're going to hit the goal line by Sep-, on or before September 30th without any problem. 15 of those projects have been completed, so they, they did what they were supposed to. We, we ran their course. Now, there's five projects that we're marking as lagging, and, and I'm not really worried or concerned about them. And the reason why I kept them as lagging is because I needed to be honest in the assessment. Some of them should have been completed by now, they're not, but we've repositioned and we have a plan to complete them on or before the completion date. The other thing is, some of those are also tied to other initiatives, like the school safety initiative. So we paused on some of those to see how we could better maximize our resources. So instead of just moving forward with them, we paused, we reflected, and then we added those into the overall school safety initiative. But as you just approved through the consent agenda items, many of those are just going to start moving forward. But I wouldn't be honest if I told you they were on track when we were supposed to be farther along, but we're not. But I'm extraordinarily confident that we're not going to have any delays or further issues and we're going to meet our targets. And then we've closed 15, 14 projects. And, and this echoes the point that Ms. Saivedra was making. There were some things that we started off with the best of intentions, but just as the world changed or the dynamic changed, we realized it, it was either not feasible, practical, or in the district's best interest to continue down that path when we recognized another need somewhere else. You know, and I think the best thing to, to, to point that out was we had a couple of projects where we wanted to hire multiple pockets of like mentor senior teachers, but then when we returned from COVID, we, we just couldn't find people to, to do a lot of the work. So we pivoted and we redirected those funds. So when we have closed projects, it's, it's not necessarily as, as a failure. It was a strategic pivot to make sure that we were maximizing our time, our efforts and our resources appropriately.
And Mr. Vazquez, when, when those projects have closed, do we tell them why we closed them?
Who do you mean by them, ma'am?
The, the ones that you, the 14 that you say you closed.
Yeah, we, we worked with the project owners, and a lot of times, those decisions were made by whoever that department was or that department head, because they would come to us and go, hey, look, we're, we've changed. This isn't a need. We overestimated cost. We, we really can't do that. And what we would then do is we would bring that back to Cabinet and Leadership and go, hey, look, we're, we're anticipating cost savings. This can't happen. And it was at that time that Ms. Saivedra and her cabinet were coming in going, explain to me why we did that. We would explain it, and then they would say, that sounds a lot like this new initiative that we had. And it just made more sense to pivot and go towards what the new strategic objectives were. But then as we did that, on the dashboard, we put those notes that we closed, we communicated them internally that they were closed. So every six months, as I've come and presented to you, we've, we've tracked this for you and shared, you know, what those changes have been.
I think it's important to note that the dashboard is critical and important because it provides that level of transparency, so that those who are interested can go through and track all of what you're seeing in terms of this particular presentation.
A $200 million grant is a huge endeavor, right? And, and trustee Hernandez, you know how grants work. Like, we get a grant, we got one thing to do. I got $200 million to do 50 different things scattered over 90 campuses. It's a little more difficult than most, but we, we've got it under control and I think we're doing a good job. So to start wrapping up, of course, your ESER dashboard is on the EPISD webpage under the quick links. You can take a look at where we're at. It's a snapshot in time that shows you where we were at, at the completion of the last month. So when we closed out at the end of February, we were at 80 and 85. Some things have gone through and closed, but today, we're at 87% through, through 80% of the project, so we're, we're doing good. You can see where all of our big rocks are, the breakdown of how our spending is divided and, and what we're working towards. Here's another snapshot of what that dashboard looks like. And to Ms. Saivedra's point, it gives you an indication of what the budgets are, how we're spending, if we've closed or sunset anything. We also keep track of that on the dashboard for you. So Norma and I don't know what we're going to do in six months when we get to sleep, when ESER goes away, but in six months, we'll come back and give you another update. And hopefully by that time, we'll be ready to, to wrap it up. So at the September 24th board meeting, I'm projecting we're going to be 98% spent, and I don't want you to panic on that, because September 30th is the, the end of the performance period, but we have 120 days after that time to close everything out. So with our HVAC projects, there's some construction processes that take place. So to tell you that everything will be closed by September 30th would, would just be setting up a false expectation. If we order supplies or materials or anything like that... So we're, we're trying to give ourselves a little bit of a window. We're going to anticipate about 98% complete by the September board meeting, knowing that we'll have the 120-day closeout period. So between now and then, what we will do as a department is report to our cabinet of any potential or identified cost savings. If we hit any snags in those areas where I didn't anticipate snags, we'll present that to Cabinet. And if we have any projected cost savings, we'll, we'll defer to them to make strategic pivots on, on where we should go and how we should align things over the course of the next six months. And so in September, we, we should be providing you with our final closeout, and then probably six months after that, we'll give you another wrap-up on how it ended. And as TEA audits and we go through those audits, we'll provide updates to Ms. Saivedra and Cabinet, and they'll share what the board is, as needed.
I have a question.
Are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Vazquez. Thank you so much for the work that you all are doing, first of all. Like you say, like you stated before, that's a lot of money and a lot of different projects, so it's hopefully benefiting a, a lot of different entities and people and kiddos and faculty within EPISD. I know that you said if there's any leftover, right? How much time are you giving yourselves, though, if there is funds left over to allocate and kind of pivot so that those funds can go somewhere where they're needed? Is it just that 120 days? Or are you giving yourself more time, right, than what would be needed for the closeout period, right?
We're already in closeout now, trustee Cuellar. So what we're doing and, and what Norma does is we run projections almost daily, where we take a look at the spending rates and we see where we're at. So we're doing a forecast. So if, if, if we're tracking and we know where we should be by today, if we're below that, we're starting to have conversations to start capturing. So there's already some of those projects that we've identified where we're not going to meet that spending threshold, so we're categorizing that. So by the end of this month, we can go to Cabinet and go, hey, this is our initial forecast. I, I want to have that forecast prepared no later than the end of April to give us an appropriate amount of time to spend out, because that could have impacts on, on, on any number of things.
So, Mr. Cuellar, just so you know, as, as we're going through the budget process, we are actively looking at any funds that we anticipate may not be expended with the current plan that we have in place with ESER, so that we can determine any one-time expense that might create some bandwidth within the current budget. But again, it, it needs to be a one-time expense, and it's got to be something that can be ordered and, and, and received within the time period of the closeout of the, of the grant.
We have to consume it by that day.
Yeah.
That's correct.
At this time, we'll go to the public comment portion. So if there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide comments, ask questions or any of the sort, we invite you to come and speak. Seeing as there are none, do any of the other trustees have any questions? All right, then I will call for a motion. I lied. There is a motion. No, there's not. It's a public meeting. So this will take us to item 8A, discuss and take appropriate action on... Well, thank you so much, Mr. Vazquez and team. 8A, discuss and take appropriate action on proposed 24, 25 school attendance zones boundary adjustments. I have Ms. Macias, Ms. Casillas, Ms. Ferret, and Mr. Lozano.
Yes, yes. Board President Irobali and trustees, just want to share with you that this evening, you're going to hear some recommendations, and these recommendations come on the heels of months and months' worth of work that have been done with community members that were appointed by you, the Board of Trustees. We recognize them during recognition, so they've spent countless hours in collaboration with administrative staff. And really, the goal was to look at where we were in terms of our school boundaries. They had not been adjusted for a decade. And as you know, over the last decade, there's been a lot of changes in terms of school closures, school consolidations, and a number of different things. In addition to that, the school district opened its doors to or began to work through what we call open enrollment. And so it was important for us to take a step back and determine how is open enrollment impacting our school district and what school boundaries need to be studied so that we can determine, you know, what our path is going forward, with the intent that we wanted to try to maintain our feeder patterns as much as, as, as possible. During the work, what we discovered were many interesting things, and I know that Ms. Macias is going to share some of that. But I think a point of importance is that what we found as we unpacked open enrollment and what, how that's impacted our school district is that while 60% of our families are still choosing their feeder pattern option, we do have 40% of our parents that are exercising their choice to access programming in other areas of the school district that may be outside of their feeder pattern. So I think that's important to note, and the, the team worked diligently over the course of many, many months. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Macias so that she can share the findings, the work, and all of the time and effort that was put in place to bring you these recommendations.
Ms. Saivedra, thank you for that prelude. Before we jump into your presentation, Ms. Macias, I do have four speakers for the item, so the first speaker is going to be Michelle Jabor. Hello, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Hi. Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to talk about the school attendance zone.
Oh, now I have a microphone. And I'm a community member, a business owner, a volunteer, a parent, and I have lived in the West Side Zone, really close actually, to Don Haskins for 23 years. And I am zoned to Franklin. However, I do have five children. None of them have gone to Franklin. I've sent all of my kids to Coronado. At the time of my daughter first went in 2014, she could only go to Coronado through the Ag program because there was no open enrollment. Anyways, I'm here because I am in favor of rezoning the West Side Zone and for all students that attend Don Haskins to be zoned to Coronado. And I have several reasons why. First of all, Don Haskins itself, you know, it's one of the consolidated schools. It is a smaller school as it is. And as my understanding, only 25% of the current enrollment, enrollment at Don Haskins actually are zoned to go to Coronado High School, while the remaining 75% are zoned to go to Franklin. However, Franklin does get all of the enrollment from the two very, very large middle schools, also on the West Side, which are Brown and Ornato. I can understand why there might have been a change to try to get some students from the current area to go to Franklin when it was a new school 30 years ago, but that idea needs to be revisited, and these students need to go back to Coronado High School. Over the past couple of years, we've lost 12 teachers at Coronado High School, and that is because of our dwindling student numbers. Next, I did vote for the Bond project eight years ago, and, you know, we've spent millions of dollars to update Coronado High School, and that school is sitting empty because the majority of the students are going to Franklin. They're not being zoned to go to Coronado. It seems kind of silly to have spent the amount of money that we did to get the school in the state that it's in now. It's beautiful, and we don't have any students that are zoned to go there. So that's a little bit upsetting to me, but I think the, and I don't think the school should sit empty, given that we, amount of money we spent. But the most important thing is that I have recently heard that Franklin is estimating to have 820 incoming freshmen next year, and Coronado is estimated to have about 235. That disparity is huge. It is enormous. Franklin does not need 820 freshmen. Coronado needs those students. There needs to be a balance. We need to be able to keep our teachers, and we don't, they don't need any more students. We need students. So I am absolutely 100% in favor of rezoning the West Side Zone and for all Haskins students to be zoned to Coronado High School. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker I have is Mr. Gina Williams. Ms. Williams, you have three minutes. Thank you.
President Irobali, Superintendent Saivedra, and Board of Trustees, as President of the Coronado High School PTSA, I address you today with gratitude for your unwavering dedication to enhancing our educational system and serving our community. Your voluntary efforts do not go unnoticed, and we commend the tireless work you've put into bettering our schools. I stand before you to ex- I stand before you to express our appreciation for the responsiveness shown by this board, the superintendent, and staff following our discussions on redistricting and the subsequent consideration of school attendance zones from back in May of 2023. Our community has undergone significant growth in the Northeast, particularly with the development of the Campo del Sol Master Plan Community, which will introduce 9,500 new homes and multifamily units within EPISD boundaries. Concurrently, certain areas within EPISD boundaries are experiencing stagnation, declining student enrollments, while others are affected by extensive transportation construction projects that could impact families attending our schools. It's imperative that the school attendance zones remain fair and equitable for all students and families within EPISD, ensuring that our schools are neither overcrowded nor underpopulated and that they prioritize the holistic development of every child while upholding principles of equity and accountability. I want to extend our gratitude to you, Superintendent Saavedra, the board, and the staff for their receptiveness to our community input, to the commitment and transparency throughout the SaaS process. You know, I think we had over eight SaaS meetings, 41 virtual and in-person community gatherings, surveys, feedback from all the stakeholders, and it really is a reflection of a genuine dedication to incorporating everyone's diverse perspectives. I want to offer a heartfelt thank you... Going fast. To Mariel Vel Macias, Stacy Pearson, and all the staff members who dedicated several months to this process alongside the SaaS committee. It's evident that the recommendations that will be presented today have been crafted with careful consideration of everyone's concerns, suggestions, and input. And we hope that with the approval of item 8A, that we will move forward with the school attendance zones in prioritizing the holistic well-being of every child while upholding those principles of equity and accountability. And your continued commitment to prioritizing the needs, safety, and voices of the entire EPISD community is deeply appreciated and vital for our collective success. So thank you so much for listening and to continuing to prioritize the needs, safety, and voices of the entire community.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next, I have Jocelyn Roberts. Jocelyn Roberts. Thank you. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jocelyn Roberts, and I'm a lifelong El Pasoan. I proudly attended EPISD schools growing up. My parents worked for the district for 40 years, and I'm a former teacher at Andrus and Coronado. And I have three sons growing up going through EPISD. So I have a lot of stake in this here. I'm here also to speak in favor of the proposed changes by the SaaS committee. I would hope that you all could take the emotion out of it. I think emotions might be high, that people don't really like change. But once you see the presentation and all the work that the SaaS committee has done, I think you'll see that strictly looking at numbers, this is something that really needs to be done. One reason is that, you know, I think somebody mentioned it's been 10 years. I think it's been longer than 10 years since the attendance zones have been changed, and it's long overdue. I also think it's extremely important to keep cohorts together. I think it fosters school pride and community pride to have kids attend elementary school together, then go to middle school, then go to high school. That's how it always was. I went to Park Elementary, Canyon Hills, and Irvin High School, and we all stayed together. And I'd like to see us kind of get back to that. Also, campuses need to be equalized and evened out. Speaking directly to Franklin and Coronado, you know, as mentioned, Franklin has two full middle schools and 2/3 of another school currently zoned for there, whereas Coronado only has a tiny little pre-K through 8 and 1/3 of another one going to it. So I think that these proposed changes will help even that out as well. And I really truly believe that these should be... These proposed changes should be approved for this coming year. I don't think we need to wait another year. I don't think we need to wait 10, 15 more years for this to happen. It's well past due. And so I ask that you consider carefully all of the hard work from the SaaS committee that we've been doing over the last few months and that you approve all of the changes being proposed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our last speaker is James Smith.
Jane?
James.
Jane.
Thank you, sir. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is James Smith. I'm the director of bands at Coronado High School. Thank you so much for hearing us today and for your time. One of my daily teaching responsibilities is that between me and my staff at Coronado, we attend every day school at either Murfree or Haskins in our attempt to vertically align our band program. At Haskins, we'll often even work with students, and we might get a kid who we have for 6th grade and 7th grade and 8th grade. We've poured our heart into this student, and then preregistration time comes and the student informs us that they're going to attend Franklin. Well, as a band director, I will talk to the student. I will call the parents and let them know, I love your student. I would love it for them to attend Coronado. They say my student rides the bus. We have to go to where we're zoned for. Our open enrollment in EPISD is fantastic for students who have rides, okay? But for those students who ride the bus, it's not an open district. They are very much going to the school that they're zoned for. And in this case, there's quite a few kids that we get on a daily basis at Haskins who want to come to Coronado, but it's just not in the cards for them. At Coronado, our construction's almost complete. The campus looks great. We have the newest, most state-of-the-art building in EPISD. We have the newest athletics building in EPISD. We have the largest fine arts facility on the West Side. Our fine arts at Coronado is outstanding. Our band advanced to the 6A State Marching Contest this year. Our theater arts advanced to state. Mariachi, you heard earlier, has advanced to state. Our choir is a consistent sweepstakes UIL award winner. Our dance has recently won overall outstanding awards at the EPIS Dance Festival. Our fine arts department at Coronado is often defined as the Juilliard of El Paso. Now, some years, we get lucky. Some years, we get a large number of students that are transfers and come in. Some years, we don't get very many. Beyond fine arts, we've got a great administration at Coronado. Our academics are proven to get kids ready for college. I say all this to let you know that students that attend Coronado are going to have an enriched high school experience. No matter what they participate in, they're going to get a fantastic education, and the faculty at Coronado and the administration at Coronado is committed to seeing them through that and to making sure that they're successful. We want to support our band and our fine arts with a stable feeder program. I ask that you vote in favor for the attendance zone change. You'll help us create a stable feeder pattern at Coronado. Thank you again for hearing us. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Ms. Macias, that was our last speaker, so I will yield back over to you.
President Idrubali, Ms. Saavedra, members of the board, at this time, I just like to take an opportunity, and if you all were part of this SaaS process, if you all could please stand, please, to be recognized. And the reason I did that is you probably might have some difficult questions I might not be able to answer, so we have plenty of brains here that will help me do that. With that, we did start this process back a couple of months ago, almost six months ago. And with that, you actually nominated some great individuals to come up and serve many, many days, many, many hours to guide us in this process. And with that, we were able to support them or recognize them today. But I truly want to thank them because they're with us for two years. That's one thing that I continue to tell them, that they're with us for two years because every single year, a district our side, we should be looking at our boundaries and our zones, especially as we're growing, as we're adjusting, as we're providing great opportunities for our children. That is very important. And we're always doing that with our mission, vision, core beliefs, and values. As somebody mentioned, we had 41 meetings. Transparency is the utmost priority. We wanted to make sure we were face-to-face, so we went to all of the campuses that might have a potential adjustment there. We wanted to do the face-to-face, and we did 20 virtual meetings. So in case somebody couldn't come to us, we wanted to extend that opportunity. We did them in the morning, midday, and afternoon to ensure we had that flexibility. And with that, we got that feedback. We leaned right back on our SaaS committee. They reviewed the feedback. We're here with you today with our final proposal. Initially, we had 16. We identified 16 campuses that had split feeder patterns. And the goal of the SaaS committee for this year is the continuity in their neighborhoods. They wanted to make sure that as children became families in elementary, they transitioned and vertically aligned to their middle school and then to the high school, just like we heard our band director. We wanted to make sure that they stay together within that feeder pattern. And today, we are creating or we're going to share with you the final recommendation for 12 adjustments moving forward. This is a list of our amazing members that were here with us. Like I said, six months of blood, sweat, and tears giving us feedback. One thing I want to commend them on, some of these pictures shows, they actually drove the areas after they landed on our recommendation to get feedback from the community. They wanted to go see what the impact looked like. Based on the recommendations we made, does it make sense? Does it truly show that continuity within the neighborhood? And are we keeping our families together? So they actually did go and identify and ride the areas to make sure that our recommendations were solid. These were the meetings that we had. We started in September, and just yesterday, we met for the last time, and they gave me a couple of adjustments. So the PowerPoint that you have, it has additional numbers there just for clarity, just to ensure that you show that we were very clear in the process that we had. So we've been giving you updates, but again, just even as of 18 hours ago, they wanted to make sure that we provided a little bit more data. With that, Ms. Saavedra mentioned open enrollment. We have 39% of our families choose to transition to other campuses or other, yeah, other campuses that are not within their attendance zone. However, we do know that that connectivity and staying within their feeder pattern is very important to many of our communities. And with that, the primary decision principle that they chose was to keep our feeder patterns together and the continuation within them. So starting off with the West Side Zone, we identified we had four campuses that had split feeder patterns, and this is the information that we have. Green, 51, 49%. And if you notice, they are split between El Paso High and Coronado. We have Zack White. And the transition for Zack White is again for their middle school, Haskins and Murfree. For Herrera, the transition is the middle school. Currently, they go to Haskins. Recommendation is that they would transition to Brown and continue to go to Franklin. And then for Haskins, as I was mentioning, Haskin currently 77% of the Haskins population attends Franklin and 23 attends Coronado. So with that information, we actually looked at the different boundaries, and I'm going to show with you... Show you the areas of recommendation. In the south-central area, we had three areas that we were bringing to you today. Area of Douglas, Mesita, and Moreno. And the area in Douglas, we have a little area, 90% attend Guian Buie, and we have 10% that attend Tinajero and Jefferson, and so on and so forth. These are the different items that we went to our community, got their feedback, and were able to come and present to you our recommendation in just a little bit. For transparency, our central east area, we looked at four different areas. Coldwell Elementary, a 74-26 split. Moreno, 88% that transitions and stays within the Austin feeder pattern, 12% that transitions to the El Paso High feeder pattern. We have Navarete at 63 and 37%, transitioning between Austin and Chavon. And then we have Hartley that transitions between Burgess and Austin. In our... Really looking at all the data, what we found is that Austin truly does not have a middle school sitting within their boundary. They don't have a middle school or a K-8 that is completely designated to them. So that's something that we wanted to work towards as we're doing this. Remember that we're going to do this every single year. So what we're going to recommend in a little bit is not going to give Austin a true 100% middle school yet, but we're going to be working towards that. For the Northeast, we currently have five areas for proposal. We have Duran, Logan, Powell, Bobby Joe Hill, and Canyon Hills. Again, something that was... That opened up our eyes is Duran currently has a split between the Irvin and the Andrus feeder pattern, but it has a split into three different middle schools. So again, that's the important, as you heard, of keeping our families together, our students together as they transition through. For transparency and thanks you for our communications department, we have a website. It has all of the information there, all the PowerPoints that we created, all of the feedback that we've received. We have FAQs in there. Our amazing team, they actually created our school finder, and they have an actual item that shows, are you impacted? So you could actually put your address in, and it would show you exactly what it looks like. That way, as we had our community meetings, individuals that went, they were... They actually knew, okay, yes, I live in an area that's impacted. This is my proposed new campus. And then they were able to give us feedback right then and there. Or they were there just to give feedback for the entire community and say, you know what? It does make sense, even though it's not... It doesn't impact me. It does make sense, and I see the reasoning for that. Or they would give us feedback if we wanted to make sure that we took something into consideration. These are the different community meetings that we had. As I mentioned, we had 41 total. And these are actual proposed recommendations that we're moving forward for you all, which are a total of 10. For the West Side, we have three recommendations moving forward. The recommendations has Haskins transitioning... They're currently at Franklin, transitioning to Coronado. What the amazing team asked me to add, that's something that you all didn't have whenever the packet was actually shared with you all last week, is that they wanted me to share that the number of students that it actually impacted, which was 61, 161. So with that, just like we mentioned, out of that, about 61% are the ones that choose to transition, and we have about 39% that will choose to stay and have their own option. So truly, for this recommendation, for the next four years, it'll probably be an impact of 100 students if this moves forward. The next recommendation that we have, which is recommendation number two, is Herrera currently transitions to Haskins for middle school and then to Franklin for high school. Recommendation is that they would transition to Brown. And if you notice, they still will continue to go to Franklin for high school. And with that, the impact is a total of 34 students. And truly, the impact is for the students that are transitioning from their current campus to a new campus. So if any students are currently within their campus, they will stay there until they go to middle school or they transition to high school. So it's just the 5th and 8th grade students where boundaries will come into play in the years to come. So that was something, again, we received feedback from the community, and they wanted to make sure that we weren't transplanting them from one campus or one elementary to another or middle school to another. And what we shared with them is no. The implementation comes into play whenever you're transitioning from one school to a new campus altogether. And the last recommendation that we have, and it's a little tiny area that we have, is we have Zack White. Currently, students go from Zack White to Murfree and then to Coronado. These students actually live on... Is it west? Yeah, south of I-10. So they're actually closer to the Haskins area, or they stay... That way, they're not transitioning through I-10. So recommendation is that they go to Haskins, and then they will continue to go to Coronado. And if you notice, next year, the number of students impacted would be five... Would be a total of eight. Again, if you identify... Do the 60-40 split, then it would be down to a handful of students potentially. So the areas we... And this same transparency is within each of the zones. We wanted to make sure we shared each of the recommendations, and we actually highlighted the area of where the students and families live of... That are potentially impacted. And with that, for example, for the recommendation for students transitioning from Haskins to Franklin, or sorry, from Haskins to Coronado, previously at Franklin, if you notice, the boundaries are there. So the northernmost boundary is Gomez Road. And then if you go down, you have I-10, and you could actually see where we have Mesa, which goes to Country Club Road, and then down to West Side Drive. So those are the areas. So anything within that area, that boundary, that red boundary are the communities and the families that are impacted. What we did for transparency is we send them all an email. We send them a phone call to let them know of the potential of their area to be impacted, to invite them to the community meetings that we had. This is recommendation two. Herrera transitioning to Haskins, from Haskins to Brown. And I won't bother you with all of the zoning areas as far as the northwest, south, and east boundaries, but the area within is the potential area that is impacted. And then item or recommendation three is Zack White. If you notice, it's a little area that I mentioned that is right near I-10. That little area is recommended to stay within Haskins. And if you notice, 90... I think it was 95% of our students already transitioned to Haskins. It's just this little area that would go to Murfree, so that way, we could keep them all together. It's just this little area that would go to Murfree, so that way we could keep them all together. If these three proposals are approved, if you notice, now we're looking at that continuity within our feeder patterns. For Green Elementary, our recommendation is to hold for a year. Again, we're gonna be here every year moving forward. The reason we wanna hold for Green Elementary is uh, we have exciting news, that is our west side Montessori. Uh, based on community feedback, we actually announced it yesterday. So um, with that information, we wanna make sure that we see if we're able to recover any of the students within that neighborhood to stay at Green. What Montessori does and that way we're looking at good data or not good data, updated data next year to make a recommendation at that point. So our green recommendation, right now we put down as a possible year two, so we'll bring that information back to you at that time. So these are the recommended changes for our south central. And our east central zone of excellence, we have recommendations for five and six. Recommendation number one that we have is Mesita. Currently goes to Guian and Buie, it's a little area that we have, and I'm gonna transition right back. It's a little area that we have um, that is actually right under I ten. Uh, this occurred whenever we did a consolidation and this was an area that currently, like I said, was at Mesita, which is north of I ten, then they would go to Guian and Buie. Our recommendation is to stay within their feeder pattern. So they would go to Aoi, Guian and Buie that, and it's, it's a very small percent, which is about two percent of our students that are there. And this is what it looks like as far as the boundaries, north, southeast and west. Recommendation number five, we have, currently we have, they're going to Sabala, Tina Jero and Jefferson. When we went to this community, um, we actually asked them, they actually lived on the west side of uh, the Patriot Freeway. And we asked, do you see yourselves more of the Chamisal community or do you see yourselves a little bit more part of Jeff, just based on where they live? Their feedback was, they do see themselves more so of the Chamisal community. So with this campus, they're actually one campus, they would, they all currently feed in to Tina Jero and Jeff, however, they're split physically or because of our Patriot Freeway. So our recommendation for that is for them to transition to Douglas, Guian and Buie. Our current students at Sabala will continue at Sabala until they transition to middle school. So that was one of the questions they had, again, for elementaries. Any of our students until they reach fifth grade, going to sixth grade is whenever boundaries would come into place. So all students at Sabala will be at Sabala next year. It's just any students coming into the area that are coming into EPISD, the new boundaries would come in. And then for middle school, they would transition to again, and then again for high school, they would transition to Buie. And this one has two different zones, um, just because it shows the elementary and then it shows the middle school and the high school. So it's the same little area, but it's different depending on the grade levels and where they live. And with this proposal, proposal number four and five, if you notice, um, if this is approved, we have achieved the continuity within our neighborhoods. At that point, we have all the students transitioning with their, with our students or with their families and colleagues to the next grade level. Recommendation number six, we have Coldwell, currently go to Tina Jero and Jefferson. With this area here, what we found, it was another consolidation that we had. And this area currently, um, again, is north of the freeway. And they transition to Tina Jero and go to Jeff for middle school and high school. Currently Coldwell, most of the students transition to Navarrete and they stay in the Austin feeder pattern. So this would help Austin now solidify their boundary um, to ensure that we're providing that continuity. And this area was whenever we consolidated, what is that little area that was there before? The school? Alta Vista, the Alta Vista area.
And um, Ms. Masias, just point of clarification, Austin High School has, is our high school with the lowest enrollment?
That is correct, that is correct. So for our central east proposed recommendation, just like I mentioned, was our Coldwell to Navarrete to Austin, that would give them that one hundred percent continuity. Our recommendation is to hold for Moreno for year two. Moreno is also le- also divided eighty-eight percent and twelve percent. Um, with that is, we just wanna give it one more year in growing, we have our Montessori there. And that way we have our good numbers so that we could come with a proposal for you. Um, Navarrete and Hartley, recommendation is that we are starting to, again, make sure that Austin High School has that designated middle school. At this point, our military community truly sees themselves as part of Navarrete and part of Chapin. What we did is this first year, and I'm gonna show you once we go to the northeast. Our recommendation is that for some of those um, students to transition to Canyon Hills and continue to go to Chapin. We wanna make sure that they get the feel of Canyon Hills and truly they're gonna be our biggest supporters for next year. We know Canyon Hills is doing great things, moving things forward, so we wanna sh- make sure that our community is behind us with that. So we're gonna move forward with one step and then next year, we will bring back that recommendation for our year two. So for our east central and our northeast, this is our last set of recommendations. We currently have Travis transitioning to Navarrete and Chapin. This is one of our first steps that we wanna do, we wanna transition Travis to Navarrete and now starting to make Navarrete transition more to Austin feeder pattern. That way, we're, just like you mentioned, Ms. Abida, that we're trying to make sure that Austin doesn't continue to decline in enrollment. We wanna make sure that they're consistent, we're maximizing the use of all of our facilities. Um, the next recommendation that we have is number eight. We have Logan transitioning to Navarrete and Chapin currently. Our recommendation is in the middle school that Logan, just like I mentioned, would transition to Canyon Hills. Recommendation number nine is very similar, Logan and Powell are right next to each other. Those two um, sister campuses would both transition to Canyon Hills and then transition to Chapin. Chapin is their natural high school. And that way, like I said, they're, they will be our biggest champions to, to root on Canyon Hills as we transition forward.
Um, um, just point of clarification as well, um, it would also alleviate uh, Navarrete because there is um,
Yes ma'am.
I mean, the enrollment there is almost to capacity, am I correct?
That is correct. And as I did the, um, for the previous slides, these are at the street level view so that everybody could see exactly if they live within the areas and what households are impacted as we transition, again, fifth graders to middle school and our eighth graders to high school. And our last three recommendations are in the northeast. We currently have Duran transitioning to Bobby Joe Hill and to Irvin. Our recommendation, if you notice, Duran was one of our schools that transitioned to different middle schools. Is for them to transition to McGoffin. So Duran would transition to McGoffin and then all consistently going to Irvin High School. And our last recommendation is that Newman currently transitions to Bo- Bobby Joe Hill, would now transition to Andrus. And again, it was one of those unique consolidations that they truly live within the area of Andrus. But because of the consolidation, that little area, they were actually um, going to Irvin.
Ms. Masias, on the previous slide?
Yes.
The previous slide, I think, no, the one right before that, uh, before that?
Okay.
Before that?
There we go, yes.
That one, number nine, uh, how, uh, how did you say or did I miss it? How are we gonna distinguish, or is I guess it'll be governed by the number of attendance at Navarrete versus going from Powell to Navarrete or Powell to Canyon Hills? How did we dis- how are you distinguishing who is gonna go where?
Oh, yes, it's by where they live, so let me share with you that recommendation here. So, let me go right, it would be, this one right here, I think this one shows, shows it the best. Are you able to see it on the screen? If you notice, Logan's feeder pattern is to the right of Chapin. That's the little area that they have, that's Logan. And then Powell's feeder pattern, which is the students that live in that area. Those two areas, instead of going to Navarrete, and if you notice, they're almost equidistant. They will now be transitioning to Canyon Hills and will continue on to Chapin. Chapin was their previously designated high school and will continue to be their designated high school with this recommendation. The only um, change or re- or adjustment that we're making is that they transition to Canyon Hills.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think with that, those are, are, nope.
I think you, 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 you still have the last nor- northeast.
Let's see, I
The next one.
With Duran, going to McGoffin, Canyon Hills to McGoffin, other than that.
Right here.
And Bobby Joe Hills, uh, we currently have Newman going to Bobby Joe Hill, which will continue. And they will transition Andrus, it's that little tiny area. And if you notice, it naturally sits in that Andrus area. It was just, again, one of those consolidations that happened many years ago. And now in looking at it, it just, it fits within that community. And this is just showing that with our recommendations, we will have um, the feeder pattern locations one and two. So for the proposal for Travis, they will now go to Navarrete, a hundred percent to Austin. For Logan and Powell Elementary, if you notice, they will go to Canyon Hills, a hundred percent to Chapin. And I know that the area here in Logan, because we're transitioning one step at a time, we still have an eighty-seven thirteen percent split. That we will be looking at numbers next year and the years to come, to bring you back with a recommendation once we're moving towards that. The others, uh, proposal ten, eleven and twelve, that they truly get us to that continuity within the feeder pattern. Mag- um, where we have uh, Duran, Hill, McGoffin, Irvin, same thing, Newman, Bobby Joe and Andrus. One other item that we are recommending for year two, we currently have an undeveloped area in the northeast. And let me get my notes, so I look, I look at my team here for, for all the, all my crazy notes, cuz I didn't add it to the slide. So currently, we have about two thousand three hundred and thirteen acres in this undeveloped area. We have about ninety, nine thousand five hundred homes and multifamily units that are be coming in, that's the Campo del Sol area. So our recommendation is we wanna put things in policy. We currently don't have an overflow policy. These students are currently zoned to Tom Lee and to Richardson. We wanna make sure that first, we don't lose any students that might transition to our neighboring school district. We wanna make sure that our families have choice. So um, probably in April, latest May, we'll be bringing you a policy that we could look at our overflows. And then at that point, we will be bringing back a recommendation as far as to maximize the use of Tom Lee and Richardson and give that community a choice. Right now, we do, we, we drove it or the team drove it and there are already homes coming up. And we just wanna be very um, transparent to those families as far as what available campuses that we have. Um, the, the one thing that we found is that Tom Lee does have a large percentage or a good percentage of students that are transferring in. So that's why the overflow policy is very important. That way, the students that live within the attendance area have that first availability for their neighborhood campus. And then the transfers, those are the ones that we would identify on a yearly basis, but we wanna make sure that it is in policy before moving forward.
So basically, what we're looking at is um, when we have a campus that may be getting close to or over capacity, that we would in, in, in effect not allow any more transfers because it, the, you know, any available spots need to be for those who are actually zoned.
That is exactly right, thank you, Ms. Abida. And with that, um, you all have all this information, we got over a thousand responses to our survey. That information, again, thank you to the SAS team, they reviewed all the information. They came back and made sure that we were um, providing the most information to our board so you could make an informed decision. Uh, just our next steps, and I wanna make sure to clarify, these are some of the questions that came up is when would this go into effect? If the board approves any recommendations, when would they go into effect? They'll go into effect for the twenty-four twenty-five school year, which is the next school year. And it impacts fifth graders going to sixth, our elementary going to middle school and our eighth graders, our middle schoolers going to high school. Or any new students that are coming to El Paso ISD for the great things that we have to offer. These are some of the frequently asked questions that we had. And with that frequently asked questions, uh, team and I are here to answer any questions that you may have as we ask for your approval of the boundaries that are recommended.
I have a question. I'd like to know, how is it determined by the city or whoever, or the developers to make sure that those areas for, in District Five are for El Paso Independent School District? I'd, I'd like to know who determines that and how is it gonna be set in stone? Because I don't want us to be like we were with Ganotio School District when that development was built over there, a lot of the people thought that they were gonna be coming to El Paso Independent School District. And they ended up going to Ganotio based on what the developers told them. How sure are we gonna know that our boundaries are just for El Paso Independent School District?
Well, I, I think that that's something that um, we, we don't alw- we can't always control the communication that developers have. Um, you know, what we will need to do is um, you know, collaborate, meet with them. You know, share with them information about our um, our school district. But at the end of the day, developers are gonna communicate what's gonna sell the homes that they're developing. And um, so we can't guarantee that the communication that they have with potential buyers is gonna be accurate communication. But we will make a very diligent and be very vigilant about collaborating with, you know, the developers. Um, and, and what the perspective options are for families that purchase homes in those areas. Um, the lines are already drawn um, for El Paso ISD. Uh, and that is done, it was done well, you know, before any of us um, w- we're, we're part of this organization. So those boundaries in terms of the square miles that encompass all of El Paso ISD are already part of the city records and the census and all that, you know, kind of stuff. Um, but, you know, developers will have to be vigilant and collaborate with them uh, to, to um, ensure that they're providing potential buyers um, the most accurate information. But I'm just gonna be on, I mean, we can't guarantee that that will always be the case.
And Ms. Renad, is the um, McCombs is dividing line between Isleta and NEPISD on our side of that development? Is all the residential that they've zoned for and they're already building on. On the opposite side of McCombs is gonna be more commercial, I think there's planned to bring in a hospital and some other things out there, those area hospitals. So it, it's, it's kinda clearly delineated even in the zoning as well.
And thank you for asking that, that way for transparency, the actually, the actual boundary lines is we have up north or the state line road. That'll be their northern tip and then, thank you, Ms. Rida Bali, it's McCombs, that is our dividing line between us and Isleta. And then on the, and then team, please correct me, we have Benny Emmler. We have Jim Castaneda, Loma Real and Martin Luther King on our, on our west side boundary. So just for transparency, those are our boundaries and that is EPISD a hundred percent. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to thank you and your team for all of the really wonderful work that you all did. I think everybody that was involved with the organization or with the SAS committee was very impressed by the level of detail that went into the data driven um, systems, the, the reports. Um, really just evaluating where families felt the most comfortable, despite the fact that we are an open enrollment organization. So a lot of really wonderful work, um, and I hope that the community does visit the website to see um, all of the presentations that the SAS committee had the opportunity to be a part of. So um, a, a great deal of gratitude um, for all of that work. One thing that I would ask, um, and just again for transparency, this is an open enrollment district, so despite these school boundaries. Um, families still have the opportunity to enroll for, for the most part, um, into the school of their choice. Um, could we just create uh, some communication protocols for what happens? For example, if a campus is filled to capacity, what that means if a student were to try to transfer in? And the second thing that I think is important when we're talking about open enrollment, where a student might be affected would be UIL eligibility. I know that is something that parents don't always understand and may understand when it's too late to do anything about it. Um, I did see that it was delineated in FAQ, it's sort of a link, but could we provide a little bit more clarity perhaps? Um, or maybe even just a contact number if people had questions about what that meant in terms of the rezoning, who they could re- in terms of the rezoning, who they could reach out to at the district?
And thank you for asking, this is just a snapshot of some of the FAQ questions that we have. If they go through it, we actually gave different scenarios, so all of the different potential UIL questions. And, um, I think I saw Mr. Cervantes here, he was able to guide us and we put all of the answers to any, anything that might be coming up. But, uh, the reason we put the link there is that way they have the information, and thank you for the guide. Uh, we will put, um, a phone number on there, that way if they have any information direct- and it's always going to our athletic directors at the campuses. Uh, they're the, they're the biggest source of, of, um, feedback for any type of UIL questions, the three sixty-five questions, yes. Am I three sixty-five?
Ms. Macias, can you walk me through again while we're waiting for the Central East proposals until year two?
Yes, let me look. For the Central East proposals for year two. These ones here.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, for Moreno, Moreno is our Montessori campus, so we wanted to make sure to give it one more year so that we could continue get, to get feedback, and not just feedback, but also the enrollment numbers. What are we looking for the enrollment? And with that, it, they had the change of Montessori this year. Um, and this is our second year with them, we wanted to make sure, just to give it a little bit more time, that way it's not compounded change. We did have a low participation in those community meetings. Um, so we wanted just to make sure that we gave our community a little bit more time to understand what school attendance zones were and what our recommendation was. It is very clear of the divide, we really don't think that there will be any controversy or feedback. But we wanted to do that in year two, just because of the changes they've gone through this year. And then for Navarrete, the Austin-Chapin, as I mentioned, uh, we did get feedback that some of our, um, our military-connected families, they see themselves a hundred percent Chapin. They see themselves a hundred percent Navarrete. So what we did this year is we took one baby step, which was actually transitioning, um, Travis to Austin. So for next year, we'll continue to work with that community to show them, and like I said, that way they'll be our biggest supporter of Canyon Hills, and that way they see themselves at Canyon Hills and at Chapin. Uh, what we did is we wanted to make sure that we listened, so as we're presenting those proposals, we wanted to make sure to, to, as administration gave those recommendations. And then the last one, if we weren't gonna transition, um, all of our students from Navarrete to Austin, we wanted to wait to transition our students that are currently at Hartley going to Burgess, because in that case, our recommendation was Hartley to Burgess. We wanted to wait to transition them away from Austin until we solidified Austin High School. And those students are naturally making that, um, choice. Whenever they're at Hartley, most, even though we have the fifty-four, forty-six split, we do have a larger number of students that choose Burgess and to stay with their feeder pattern cohort. So, um, since we weren't, we were gonna wait for year two for Navarrete, that's why we waited for year two, year two in Hartley. If not, we would be negatively impacting Austin while, um, not balancing yet. We wanna make sure we solidify a middle school for Austin before we transition our students from Hartley a hundred percent to Burgess.
Okay, I guess, I guess my question for the Navarrete Middle School transition? The explanation you're saying is because the military community identifies as, as Chapin and not another one. And so I guess as we look across the district and my community identifies as Andrus, you know, the south side identifies as Jeff or as Bowie, why is this community gonna be allotted another year of, of a transition and adjustment period, but not the other communities that are affected?
And again, that, those were based on the feedback that we received. That was what we moved forward as, as a board, you all have, that's why we were transparent, to give you all the information. Um, administration does recommend for year two, but as a board, if you would like to move forward, all of these were, um, were different proposals that we went to the community with, all sixteen, uh, they gave, they looked at them and they gave us feedback.
So that's just based on the community feedback component?
Correct.
Do we know how many participants participated in the Navarrete Middle School one? I think there's a slide on it, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, let me look. And then I'll look at my team, that way. I have Ms. Orosco back there looking at our feedback for surveys. Hi, Ms. Orosco, there you are.
What percentage is that, do you know by chance, or what's the total impact?
So it's not the total, that the numbers of people who live in the address zone, these are just people who responded to the survey.
Okay.
So there's fifteen that are impacted, that responded to the survey. And I think Ms. Macias has a slide of how many actual number of people are impacted in that area. And six, that's sixty-seven percent do not support it.
Okay, and do we see similar numbers of that across the board?
Regarding all other campuses?
It seems like, it seems like the do not supports is relatively high for the change for most of the areas, is that correct?
I would have to go individually and check for you.
Okay.
Yeah, the do not supports, um, in looking at our feedback, the main ones were truly the transition from, yeah, on the west side, transition from Franklin to Coronado. Those were the ones that, that were mo- most vocal as far as that disagreed. And then the second one was in our northeast area, which is transitioning from Navarrete, um, to Austin, then Navarrete to Chapin.
Okay, I, I guess, um, for me, it's kind of, we're doing a holistic approach and we're looking at it. I would have liked to, I mean, it makes sense when not, in a non-undeveloped area to delay that conversation while we talk to the developer, we look at the lines, what it's gonna look like. Um, Moreno makes perfect sense, right, it's a brand-new program that we're building, we're trying to grow, but it's this existing community. Um, I have heartburn that every other district, um, and every other community has to kind of bite the bullet and say, we're jumping into this change now, and this is kind of the way that we're growing to address the redesign of our high-quality seats, address the redesign of what the new EPISD, EPISD looks like. Um, and then we have kind of this outlier. I, I, I mean, it's up to the board, I don't know if, even if we, if you're ready to make that transition or if that conversation has been thought out completely about doing it year one, year two, cuz one thing, I mean, you guys know how I am. I'll question it, but if it's not, the district staff's not ready to support these initiatives, there's no reason for us to move in that direction, because it's just disastrous. So, I mean, as we look at that specific one, which is the Navarrete. At this one.
So just, um, what, when we did have the community meetings, we had several in the northeast, and it was the military parents that were present. We even added three additional at their request. Um, and we did have some of our members from our SAS committee present at those meetings, and they were able to hear the feedback about not in agreement with the Navarrete to Austin. So when we came back as a committee to review all of the feedback from everybody, it was the SAS committee in our northeast that didn't feel comfortable hearing, having been in the meetings firsthand, hearing that feedback from the parents to say, well, we asked you for your feedback, but we're still moving forward with that, because they were, it was the parents who were saying, we're not in agreement with, with that change. And they were the ones that were attending the meetings.
But our intent is still in year two to probably move in that direction, correct? I guess that, that's just the ultimate kind of question that I have there, is we delayed one, um, for sixty-seven percent, is that correct? I believe that's what it was, um, disapproval of that, um, and I don't know what the total percent is, so that's the only thing that, you know, I, I'd like us to kind of look at, um, I think we can, I, I leave it up to the board, I don't know if anyone has a concern about this at all, uh, one way or the other. Um, but I, that's the only thing I kind of see, I would have liked to kind of move forward on this, just because all the other communities are doing it. It kind of helps us see year one, two, and three, what it's gonna be like, instead of next year, we're still waiting for that benchmark data to see across the board where our community's gonna be like. To me, I'd rather pull the trigger, see year three where we're at again, or year two, whatever that process looks like, and have baseline data or benchmark data that every, uh, community kind of applies to.
The one recommendation is that if you all considering, consider it as a package. So consider Navarrete to, um, to Austin, but also consider Hartley to Burgess. Because that way it's consistent, because in this case, it would be, it, it offsets. Even though we're now the continuity within the neighborhood for Austin, but we also wanna do the same thing for Burgess. They do truly see themselves as part of the Burgess feeder pattern.
And then, so to your point, it didn't, Hartley doesn't make sense because it would have an adverse reaction to Austin, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I mean, then holistically, yes, if we have to pair the two, then it makes no sense of hurting one of our communities, in my opinion.
I, my concern here is that I, I feel like the committee has been very thorough, um, in meeting, and I, I feel like they have an expectation that what's presented to them is gonna be presented to the board in good faith. Um, so I would be wary of not accepting the district's recommendation, just because it is coming directly from the committee after a slew of meetings, a lot of hard work. Uh, I'm personally hesitant to, uh, di- divert from the committee's recommendations just because I feel like we had that process for a reason. Um, so I'm personally inclined to, to move forward with what the committee is presenting to us today, for that reason.
I don't know, any other trustees, I mean, it's gonna, at the end of the day, just how, it, I'm not a big fan of this, I think it's an equity issue that exists. I think in many cases, there are communities in throughout El Paso County and EPISD that if they speak loud enough, we halt the breaks, and we say, we're gonna take a step back, and we're gonna listen, and we're gonna kind of respect your opinion. And then we have several communities in El Paso ISD that don't raise their voices loud, because they don't feel like they have an advocate, or they don't have a seat at the table. And those are the communities that are adversely affected in a situation like this. And so as we look at this through an equitable lens, if we're impacting all of our community across the board and saying this is what the new EPISD redesign's going to look like, tearing it, it just delays our data sets. So that when we look at it in two to three more years, we're gonna be a year off from that first to second year transition, which is, and is gonna impact us as we look at the year three, four, or five, because we're gonna have one-year difference. That's the only reason I'm not a fan of that. Um, you know, with Moreno being a new program, there's justifications behind that one. Um, this one doesn't, it doesn't sound like this is a, a, a real concern for the board, that they wanna take it up. Um, so again, I'm not, if we're not ready, it's gonna adversely affect Austin, it's not something that I'm gonna do. But as we look at this holistically, when we're addressing this in two more years or three more years, I hope that we kind of address that. Um, because we, we have seen it several times, not just on this issue, but several, where the communities will just say, yes, they don't participate, because maybe they don't feel like it's gonna matter, and then, uh, it doesn't change the impact.
And, and I would say that as we look at this recommendation for year two, a big part of the, um, the goal, um, is to address, number one, that Austin does not have a dedicated middle school, um, which is why I believe that there is, um, that, that right now, they're the high school with the lowest enrollment. Um, because there's not a dedicated feeder pattern that feeds all the way through Austin High. So, um, year two goal is to rectify that, that issue.
And I just wanted to add, I'm with you, President Irovali, regarding, um, having to wait for a community to be part of this whole change, but at the same time, I commend the community, the commitment from you, Ms. Mariel, and, uh, gosh, Ms. Macias, the, the rest of the group for doing this. It was a lot of hard work, and they were trying to fill in, or at least receive the feedback from all the community. So I think at this point in time, maybe we can just, you know, follow through with what the committee has, has recommended. And then, when we need to revisit it, this, this plan, maybe we can consider how we go about doing that in the future.
And, and by no way, I apologize if it came across that way, that I was, you know, not appreciative of the work that, that went into SAS or, or anything of that. I went to two of the meetings, I know the work that you did, I know the touring that you did and all the hard work. I just, as we look holistically across the district and we look, you know, I, I just don't see it as SAS, right? I see it as part of our redesign, and then I see it as part of our high-quality seats, you know, debate and conversation, we're having the criteria. And when we kind of tier and structure it, where one community or one subset population may not be in, you know, agreement, that has a domino effect as we go through this entire process, because we can't just piecemeal it, community by community or neighborhood by neighborhood. Um, because at the end of the day, I, someone said it in, I think in public comment, right? This is gonna be an emotional thing as we go through it, period. Um, and I think we're getting close to that line of, right, you know, the next step is gonna be even more emotional. And so if we decide to take a break or hesitate because of emotion, or, um, you know, the, the more personal kind of, um, issues, it's gonna have a, a dire consequence on the logic and data and reason side that we have as we make really tough decisions coming down in the next, you, what, year to five years, I think is really where um, every school district in El Paso County's gonna have to reevaluate what they look like and what they're gonna look like in the future. So, again, I, I hear it loud and clear, we're not ready to do this, it's gonna have an adverse reaction to what we're trying to do, it's gonna kind of set us a step back, so I'm, I'm happy to proceed as, as we, as the recommendation is, if I have a motion.
Yep, I, I have a motion, but before I do, I just wanna, once again, recognize, uh, the staff and the SAS committee for all the, all the hard work. Uh, they're like, there's so many different moving pieces of this, I, it's just super impressive to me that that staff is able to keep it all straight. It, um, I, I've heard from, uh, more than one, um, SAS committee member that, that staff was very impressive in this process and how they, you know, gathered and interpreted the data and, um, the recommendations that they made, so. Well done, proud of you guys. Um, I moved that the board approved the proposed school attendance zones boundary adjustments as presented.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by trustee call in a second, I think everyone wanted to second it. Uh, trustee Hanani was the second I heard, so, uh, do you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? The item passes unanimously, six, zero. And this will take us to item number nine, a overview of the future board meeting agenda items, Ms. Ivedra.
Yes, thank you, President Irovali and trustees. Um, really what we have on, on deck for April, um, we will be presenting the twenty-twenty-three fiscal, um, uh, financial forecast uh, for you. Um, we'll also be giving, um, a facilities, um, update. And, um, I've, I've also added, um, a report on special education so that we can give you an update on the work that's being done, um, to realign our special education, uh, department in May. Um, we are gonna be certifying, um, the required continuing education hours for board members. Um, we're gonna be bringing you, um, instructional materials allotment proposal, um, to align with the new science teaks. And, um, we're also planning to bring, uh, a dual-language update so that we can update the board on the work that's been done over the course of the semester um, associated with, again, uh, enhancing and improving our dual-language program. So that's what we have on deck, coming up in April and in May.
Thank you, Ms. Ivedra, this will take us to adjournment, and we will call this meeting at seven twenty-two, thank you, everyone.